One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item of business, election of officers. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Sheila, or Commissioner Kessgaden as-
As Chair and Vice Chair. Mark Tyne.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Alright, so we have a motion for Sheila Kessgaden to be Chair and Mark Tyne to be Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Alright, we have new officers. Thank you very much for relieving me of my duties. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I, um, I think my colleagues will be surprised to know that I wrote comments rather than just speaking extemporaneously because I really wanted to be sure that I would cover every topic and not lose track. So if you'll put up with indulgence, I'm really going to read my comments to you today. You know, I really started about, thinking about a year ago, as we sat at this table, four of you were brand-new commissioners, three of us were returning. And in that first year, you colleagues have delved deeply into the services that Olmsted County has the responsibility to provide for our communities. And concurrently, our staff have been preparing for various new initiatives to advance our vision of fostering a vibrant community where everyone thrives. And I think we, I think the combination of the staff work and all the preparation that you have done as county board members and as we formed a cohesive team as county board, not that we always get along on every topic, but I think, I think we are really well positioned for the future. So as we embark on 2024, Olmsted County acknowledges that we have advantages and the challenges of being a regional center with a robust local economy and a significant employer poised for substantial investments. Foreseeing mayors and other investments will lead to rapid growth and technological advancements, the county must prepare for new demands and new expectations. Thankfully, guided by periodic board input, our dedicated staff, some who are in this room, have spent the last eighteen months crafting an updated adaptable strategic plan. This plan will steer and prioritize our objectives for the next four years. In the coming months, the plan will be ready for full public review of our proposed goals and strategies. At the same time, response to climate change has been a topic of discussion at every level of government, and Olmsted County has no exception. We had a nice presentation this morning, unexpected, but welcome on this very topic. And as the presenter noted, you know, we are now today going to begin to review the work undertaken by our staff to develop a climate action plan for managing Olmsted County's services and facilities. Now, let's acknowledge that this plan predominantly focuses on internal measures. Specifically, how can the county proactively reduce its climate impact and embrace sustainable resource usage as we provide services? We are seeking to be proactive and innovative in meeting our responsibilities and community expectations, which is a core driver all of the time for Olmsted County. And we also have a commitment to fully representing our residents and communities. And as someone once observed, and I don't know the author of this comment, but I like it so much, "In the intricate tapestry of democracy, local government is the vibrant thread that weaves together the voices, cultures, and needs of diverse communities, fostering unity through representation." We know that to have a robust democratic functioning, local government must actively engage with residents, must ensure alignment with their best interests and execution of their will. Therefore, for Olmsted County, expanding the ways that the county engages with residents will be a key focus in 2024. In addition to our established citizen advisory panels, Olmsted County is forging more flexible and direct connections to our many diverse communities and interest groups. For instance, the Environmental Commission does not exist as it was a year or so ago. Instead, we are having a task force of advisors on specific aspects of our environmental management. The first one is being convened to aid us in designing a self-hall reuse recycling center. This center will be a pivotal part of our vision for how we are going to expand green, eco-friendly waste management into our future. Another example involves social workers and community organizations who are regularly engaging with a group of adults who have lived experience with mental health issues. Another example, recognizing that the diverse cultural communities' interests within Olmsted County are quite broad, a team is co-designing a new cadre of community connectors to actively engage and seek input from residents of varying identities and experiences. Together, these new strategies for community engagement, along with our goals for diversifying our workforce, are a direct reflection of Olmsted County's commitment to the social, health, and racial equity philosophy of our One Olmsted Initiative. Assuring that our residents have affordable homes is another way Olmsted County is focused on that philosophy of equity. Our vibrant local community is translating into more jobs and an increased demand for housing. We already have a serious housing supply problem. We simply need more homes, especially for those with modest or low incomes. Olmsted County is committed and poised to collaborate with private and public sector entities to bolster the supply of homes in our communities. The recent award by the state of Minnesota to Olmsted County will allow the county to construct a thirty-six-unit apartment building for low-income seniors this year. Additionally, the county is actively working to collaborate with the city of Rochester and the Coalition of Housing to attract more private and public investment in new entry-level homes. Moreover, the county is partnering with other community allies to establish housing stability for those experiencing homelessness. Our aim is to address the root causes and ensure that homelessness is rare, brief, and one time by providing services that prevent homelessness and that transition individuals into permanent housing. Let's acknowledge achieving this goal necessitates collaborative efforts far beyond Olmsted County's sole capabilities. Furthermore, our county needs expanded resources to support those experiencing mental health or substance abuse problems, and we are joining forces with many partners to call out the need for statewide and local attention to these very serious and persistent service gaps. With a growing economy and a growing population comes increased waste generation and potential environmental impacts. Olmsted County has secured funding and is actively designing a state-of-art materials recovery facility at our Waste-to-Energy Plant. Concurrently, we're seeking state funding for the reuse recycling self-hall facility that our citizen task force is helping design. But these initiatives are important, but they are just the initial steps toward what we're envisioning as a comprehensive, hopefully, carbon-neutral waste management system of the future. We are beginning the visioning and the planning process for that as we speak. I am pleased to say that redevelopment of Graham Park continues to be on the county's agenda for action. Those of you who know me know that that has been a particular passion of mine. And in Olmsted County, in 2024, we'll launch the next phase of Graham Park's incorporation of new and renovated historic facilities and grounds designed specifically for community, family, and organizational events. Graham Park is achieving its vision of providing diverse and affordable venues for people to gather, celebrate, and learn. Given that 2024 is an election year, the county holds responsibility for managed elections. Olmsted County remains resolute in assuring the integrity of our electoral processes, guaranteeing the counting of every eligible vote. Robust systems, including bipartisan oversight, are in place to ensure that the election results accurately mirror the voters' will. For me, a hallmark of local government is our nonpartisan nature. This aspect enables citizens' direct engagement with the decisions impacting their lives. Any resident, any citizen can choose to run and serve in local office and listen to the needs and aspirations of other residents, and they can do so without the filter of partisan politics. As we enter this election, where with four county board seats on the ballot, let's prioritize this community connection, this direct community connection, and the nonpartisan nature of our local governmental units. I have had a long personal history with Olmsted County, goes back to the early days of my career, which is, I'm now toward the end of my career. I've served as its legislative liaison, as a member of the state legislature, and now as a county board member. I have always been proud to serve the residents of Olmsted County, and I've been especially proud of the dedicated staff and their commitment to service and to excellence. I look forward to more progress in 2024. In 2024, let there be more. We have a lot to be proud of in Olmsted County. We are not without our challenges, but we have a commitment on both the board's side and the staff's side to address them and to resolve them, and to do so in a way that, um, that looks for the common ground and the common good, and does not hold grudges when points of view do not prevail. And that sounds like a lot in a political environment, in the political times we're in, that is hard to achieve, and this board is doing very well with that, with the strong support of our really excellent staff. So thank you. Now, I will move to the consent agenda.
Ms. Chair, or Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I would move to, I'm removing item five D for a comment.
Commissioner Senjam, let me read through them and then make your motion.
I'm sure.
Alright, so, the consent agenda, A, is approve the December nineteenth Olmsted County Board minutes, B is to proclaim Human Traffic Awareness Day in Olmsted County, C is to recognize January as the National Radon Action Month, D is to approve the Human Services Advisory Board bylaws, E is to approve Graham Park rental rates for 2025, F is to approve the opioid settlement funds for community awareness campaign, G is to approve the gambling permit for Deer Creek Longspurs, H is to designate official publication for county projects, I is the Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and J is to approve the Equal Opportunity Policy Statement. We are going to move to take item E, approval of the Graham Park rental rates, and move that into the discussion items. And now, Commissioner Senjam, would you like to make your motion on item D?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to remove item five D for a comment and subsequent approval.
So at this point, you just would want to make a comment? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the consent agenda, absent five D, and the Graham, or the, yeah, the Graham Park issue. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Senjam, would you like to make your comment now about five D?
Yes, Madam Chair. And we discussed this a bit in the, uh, in the Housing, Housing and Human Services Committee, Health Housing and Human Services Committee this morning, but, uh, and these are the bylaws relative to the Human Services Advisory Board. And I, I've just, I've got a couple of, maybe four or five items within there. I'd like to review with staff and maybe substantively with our, with our Health Housing and Human Services Committee and then bring forward to the, to the board, maybe for another look see. But for today, I would move approval of item five D, but with that notation, uh, I want to, I want to work a little bit on those. I think there's some areas that we can improve them.
And for the benefit of the other members, uh, five D currently has just a couple of very small technical changes, like removing the annual review of the, of the bylaws. And the Human Services Advisory bylaws are very consistent with the bylaws used for the Public Health Services Advisory Board and for the Human Rights Commission. So as Commissioner Senjam looks to some language changes that he thinks would make, would improve the document, the staff recommendation is that we look, you know, that that be held, that we approve today's bylaws and the bylaws today, and then we do a deeper look at all of them and come back at a future date. So as I understand the motion, the motion is to approve items A through J, removing items E for discussion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stay side. The motion prevails. Now moving to discussion and decision items, we're going to take up the approval of the Graham Park rental rates for 2025, and I believe that Commissioner Rosman wants to address this issue.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In our discussion this morning in the Physical Development Committee, we discussed the updated rental rates at Graham Park, and you will all remember that these new rental rates include a discount for Anni Hall, which is a facility that we see a lot of nonprofit organizations utilize, and we want them to have a lower rental rate. What I would like to also propose in addition to these rental rates is a $3,000 budget. That $3,000 budget will be available to local nonprofit organizations to apply for, for use for any other facility or building at Graham Park. So we already have a reduced rate at Anni Hall for them. They will also be able to access $3,000 to offset the cost of renting other buildings at Graham Park. Again, the goal of this board is to continue to allow all of the facilities at Graham Park to be readily accessible and usable by our nonprofit organizations in Olmsted County, and we feel that this would be a great addition to those, uh, that newly updated rental rate.
So, um, as I understand it, your intention is to move the approval of the, of the proposed Graham Park rental rates with the addition of a budget item of $3,000 a year available to not-for-profit organizations for discounted use of other Graham Park facilities. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just kind of a technical question, it sort of relates back to even our last meeting, but so we have, it seems to me we have two sources of funds, our contingency fund or a reserve fund. Do we know which of those funds, the $3,000 will come out of, or is there another fund I don't know about?
Ms. Welsh, would you answer that question, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, the contingency fund really is a piece of the reserves, so it doesn't really much matter where, where you take that from. I would suggest that you just designate reserves for $3,000.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and just a matter of information. Maybe that should be incorporated in the motion.
Any other discussion? Is there an amendment to the motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that the $3,000 be obtained from the reserve fund.
Is there a second for that amendment? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The amendment to the amendment prevails. Now we have the amended amendment before us. Is there, is there any need for clarification on what's before us? Alright, we have a motion and a second for the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion prevails. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now to our informational items, and today we have an update on department plans to address and adapt to climate change. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Errett Miller, Director of Policy Analysis and Communications. This morning, we are pleased to share with you the county's initial climate action plan. This plan stems from an inventory of our own activities that was conducted over the last couple of years, benchmarking and research in other organizations and best practices, and then initial concepts that were presented to this board last spring. As was alluded to earlier in the chair's comments, as well as in the public comments, this is a focus initially on our own actions and services and functions within Olmsted County, to make sure that we are doing the best job that we can as an organization. Many of these things have already been underway, but this is the first time that we've put them together in this format of a climate plan. So we're also eager to discuss what next steps might look like, but this is the presentation to close what we were calling Phase Two, which was those initial action steps. So Michael Garner, a management analyst with PACC, has been facilitating this process with our staff task force. He'll share an overview with you today to get you re-grounded in this work, and then I will come back at the end to discuss some next steps. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. I'm Michael Garner, Management Analyst with Policy Analysis Communications Team. Thank you, Deborah. Today, this presentation, as Deborah mentioned, is intended to close out the work that we've been doing in Phase Two of this effort. And so we'll review the, the scope and process that we used during Phase Two. We'll also acknowledge the contributions of staff members that served in the Phase Two Task Force. We'll highlight some of the key action plans from the overall set of actions, and we'll share with you the launch of the public-facing Olmsted County Climate Website page. And then Deborah will return and we'll discuss some next steps for this work. As you may recall, Commissioners, Phase One began earlier, well, it concluded in 2021 in December, carried out by some members of our team, where they identified across the Olmsted County organization over four hundred and fifty efforts and actions that were being taken or planned to address climate change. We took that inventory in Phase Two, beginning in March of 2022, as the subject of focus by our task force members. So from May of 2022 to October of 2022, we did research and benchmarking, comparing efforts of other jurisdictions, both here regionally and across the nation, to understand where we had actions that were well-aligned with some of the best practices that we identified, as well as actions that we could develop for future action. We identified thirty-two prioritized recommendations during our second phase of analysis and prioritization. So from October of 2022 to April of 2023, we identified from those four hundred and fifty-four efforts that were in place, thirty-two broad and, and some specific actions that we brought before the board back in spring, in spring of 2022 for review, and those then went to the departments across Olmsted County in 2023, where we conducted action planning in concert with those departments. I'd like to acknowledge the members of the task force, including first of all our sponsors for the project. So Deborah Errett Miller from the Policy Analysis Communications Team, Matt Miller, Director of Facilities and Building Operations, and Tony Hill, Director of Environmental Resources. Those three individuals served as guides for our work as sponsors. We also had support and coordination for the effort, including myself and my manager Stacy Sunby, and our colleague Emma Dirks, the Communication Specialist from the Policy Analysis and Communications Team. We also had a team of individuals from across the Olmsted County organization. These folks were committed to this effort. There's a lot of passion and talent and insight that was shared by members of the task force, and we are grateful for their work to address climate stewardship and environmental stewardship, as well as service excellence for Olmsted County. Here's a list of those individuals that are currently employed by Olmsted County. We have had a couple folks that served on the task force who have moved on from our organization. And so we are grateful to all of these individuals for their work. So as we conducted action planning previously in 2023, I almost said this year, but it's now 2024, previously in 2023, we took those thirty-two recommendations and asked the appropriate departments to review them, conduct further analysis of the recommendations, and create action plans to move those forward. I will note that some of those actions were already underway, and some of them were identified as opportunities to expand current efforts, and some were already poised to be implemented. I will also note that one recommendation was removed because it was found under further analysis that it neither had an ecological benefit nor an economic benefit. It would have cost us money and perhaps locked us into emissions, so we removed that item. Otherwise, the remaining thirty-one were developed into action plans, and task force members that had been shepherding these recommendations through the process were available to the departments to advise and provide insight and background for the research and analysis that they had done. Action plans are now prepared, and they'll be implemented and monitored by department-level staff. So I'd like to provide a high-level overview of the action plans. We do have a summary document with the action plans that has also been shared as part of the board packet. We have a slate of what we call near-term action plans. These are action plans that will be completed and are ready for launch by the end of 2024. You can see that they exist within five recommendation themes, which are building and energy, natural resources, people, transportation, and waste and materials. Roughly half of the recommendations and action plans are in this near-term set. Many of these are in process, and they're either being continued or expanded. We also have a slate of longer-term action plans. Their launch or ready date goes beyond 2024, sometime in 2025 and beyond. Some of these are very significant items, and you can see that they exist within those same five themes. We'll highlight a handful of these in future slides. As we look at the action plans, we conducted a series of analyses on a few different factors. One was estimated budget implications. You can see that as we break down in the five themes, we estimated major, moderate, or minor budget implications. And you can see the breakdown, the most significant budget implications come in the building and energy and natural resources areas, as well as a major project each in the transportation and waste and materials themes. We also broke down the recommendations and action plans by department that will lead these efforts. You can see that the Facilities and Building Operations, Environmental Resources, and Public Works have the majority of the associated action plans. Three of them exist for Information and Technology Services, and then one each for Parks, Finance, Human Resources, and Soil and Water Conservation District Departments. Within the action plans, there are some key types of actions that exist. The first is education and communication about climate action and information. So broadly speaking, we have a number of action plans that include or feature communication and information sharing as a component of the action. We also have action plans that include modification of existing facilities and/or modifications to projects for future implementation. We also see that we have a focus on reducing energy use and emissions throughout our operations in Olmsted County as an organization. We also have a focus on increasing native planting and using climate-friendly infrastructure where it's viable and, and possible. We also want to focus on updating policies to reduce waste and encouraging climate-responsive actions across our organization, and finally leveraging technology to reduce our emissions production and use cleaner energy overall. So we find these types of actions embedded within the action plans, some of them, sometimes the action plans include multiple of these. So we might have an action plan that includes education and communication and adapting policies, for example. Some of the key initiatives from our action plans, many of these are found within the Facilities and Building Operations and/or the Environmental Resources Department's leadership. They include installation of geothermal heating and cooling systems at the Public Work Service Center and at the Regional Public Safety Training Center, replacement of roof at the Government Center with a white surfacing for light reflectivity to reduce energy impact, installation of MRF-13 filters on specific projects at both of those physical locations mentioned previously, and the addition of more buildings to be monitored in the B3 system, which helps, helps the Facilities and Building Operations Department understand energy use. Madam Chair.
I may be the only one who doesn't know what a B3 system is.
I'm afraid I don't, I couldn't, from an informational standpoint, Madam Chair, respond to that. I would encourage Director Matt Miller to share that information with us. He'll come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Miller, Director of Facilities and Building Operations. B3 stands for Buildings Benchmarking and Beyond. It's a state system that allows entities to monitor their energy usage, and it also links with EnergyStar, so you can monitor your energy use. links with EnergyStar, so you can monitor your energy use.
So we would then be adding our buildings into the state system, and does that hold us accountable in a different way?
We do include it in reporting through Destination Medical Center, so there is a community-wide effort to monitor energy use. So yes, we do participate in that voluntarily. Right now, we have about twenty-three buildings in that system, and our goal is to add many more.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, as long as he's here, can I just follow up?
Yes, Commissioner Sinjam.
So going back to reduce energy use and emissions throughout operations, so do we have the ability today to tell the Board what the, for instance, what the energy use is, and based on electrical bills or kilowatt-hours? Does that, for all of our, for all of Olmsted County functions, do we have that ability today?
Yes, we do. So for twenty-three of those buildings, they are in B-3, so basically it tells us our energy use intensity. We're right about seventy-five thousand BTUs per square foot is roughly what our energy use is, and our goal is to drive that lower. And obviously, some of our higher buildings are in the two hundreds. The Public Works Service Center, as an example, is down in the twenties. So it's a pretty wide range of energy use, but that then benchmarks us against both state buildings as well as national buildings.
So, Madam Chair, and so then, on the emissions side, we heard this morning, for instance, that waste energy systems, a hundred and ninety thousand tons of carbon a year. Do we kind of have any idea what other emissions are, whether it's Sheriff Department automobiles or whatever else it might be, what those emissions are?
Outside of the buildings, probably not, but within the buildings, we would know our emissions. And just a reminder is RPU has a plan to be a hundred percent renewable in 2030. So that is significantly going to change our energy profile, because most of our buildings use electricity from RPU. It's going to be essentially carbon-free come 2030.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some additional key initiatives from our action plans include materials recovery facility design implementation, as mentioned earlier in this Board meeting, and the inclusion of some current and future bonding requests, including the aforementioned Community Reuse and Recycling Center, food waste separation equipment, and carbon capture plan for the Olmsted Waste-Energy Facility. I'm also pleased to share that our communications team has launched a public-facing page on climate. This includes a summary of actions that the Olmsted County Organization has put in place through this Phase Two of our Task Force, as well as helpful information for members of the community for what they can do to contribute to mitigation and adaptation of climate concerns and climate change. So now I'd like to move to the next step slide, and I invite Deborah to join me for that, as we talk about what comes next in our climate action and response.
Thank you, Michael. As you just saw, we have launched the page this morning devoted to climate change on the website. You can just type in "climate" into the search bar, and it will start to pop up. As you probably know, there are many, many, many resources out there already on climate, and so we're not trying to replicate all of that information. What we want to focus on is what is the county doing? So this is a vehicle we can continue to communicate with the public about our actions, and then tying some specific action steps that the public can take where appropriate to things that the county offers. So for example, reuse and recycling center, or if you're a landowner, a farmer, producer, and you can engage with Soil and Water Conservation District, for example. So it's not just only the general actions, but things that are specific to ways to engage with Olmsted County. So we'll continue to evolve and add complimentary information to these pages as appropriate. Last year, Commissioners also asked the communications team to develop a plan for communications focused on the environment and the county's work, and so I intend to have a proposal ready for that action plan by the end of this month. And then as we move forward, of course, we'll continue to use our communications tools to provide updates to the public on major initiatives that the county is undertaking, future plans and steps, et cetera. As again was previously mentioned, the county is also getting ready to launch our four-year strategic plan, and environmental sustainability is one of the five priorities in that plan. So we'll continue to see how the county's actions and priorities evolve. We know that environment will continue to be important, and so as departments are implementing the actions in this plan, we will also transition leadership of this overall work to our Planning Department and the leadership of Dave Dunn. So he is going to be seeking additional information and direction from this Board of Commissioners about future action steps. He'll also be considering, you know, whether to launch, whether and when to launch any additional community-facing initiatives, and then identifying appropriate long-term staffing model to support the work. And then finally, we are continuing to monitor and apply for funding opportunities that support climate work. There are many of these as well, so I'll highlight just a few of them. In 2023, we submitted a grant application for four million dollars to support the materials recovery facility. You might recall, this one was for the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. It was called a SWIFER grant, solid waste infrastructure. Unfortunately, we learned that we did not receive that grant, but we are continuing to monitor all the federal opportunities. Many department directors receive information directly from agencies that are most relevant to them, but then our federal partners at Aurora Downs also send us usually weekly updates on federal opportunities. And then there are also listservs for state opportunities that we monitor as well. But a couple of examples that are still coming up or pending, there is a federal electric vehicle charging infrastructure grant that was submitted by Mr. Miller last year, and we expect news on that grant by February. I understand that Physical Development Committee today was discussing a carbon utilization grant. January sixteenth, the Physical Development Committee will also be discussing wood waste in greater depth, and I understand there is some federal funding right now around wood waste. And then we also, the county anticipates issuing an RFP related to solar power at the landfill in the next few weeks. And this RFP will require the applicant to work with People's Cooperative regarding incentives. So once we get proposals, then we'll need to decide if we want to pursue the project or not. So that's just a little sampling. I'm sure there are more things going on that I don't even know about, but just to say that we understand there are still many, many opportunities that will help us advance this work if we can pursue outside funding as well. So with that, that concludes our presentation. I'll stand for any questions or other department directors that may have more detailed information.
Commissioner Rosman.
I have a question regarding your budget categories. So as I look at the more detailed document, you have major, moderate, and minor categories. So I see one that lists building improvements, which is going to be capital investment, infrastructure, et cetera, it says "major." And then there's another one that describes SWCD activities that are hosting meetings to cage farmers, and that also says "major." So I can't quite wrap my head around how, what are the categories? Yeah. So can you provide any more details around those categories?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rosman. We intentionally kept it somewhat, not vague, but very broad, because there are many things that we don't yet know exactly what the cost would be. So we didn't want to get too specific in this initial document on each and every item and what the, you know, what the budget request might be. But generally speaking, minor was considered, things that are within budget, things that departments could already do. So things like tool purchases that would be, you know, not using gas but using battery, things that would fall within expected budget departments. And then major, you know, then going up from there, essentially things that would be, as you said, the most major would be things that we would need to put into the capital improvement plan or seek bonding or federal funds for that the county would have to have a specific plan for how that work would get done, because there's currently outside of budget scope. So we can certainly do more definitive planning if that's helpful at this stage. Really, we're trying to empower the departments to move forward with figuring out what is the right process for each of these action plans. So is it something that they can negotiate within their own budget, or, you know, find a grant to support it, or is it something that, yes, has to come through our broader budget and capital improvement plan process?
So really, these are, these are broad implementation ideas, that there's still much process, and they will all come to us in very different ways, depending on what exactly the initiative is, et cetera.
Absolutely, that's correct. But I mean, I think one of the important things with noting that not everything is a major initiative. I mean, sometimes we think only about, you know, renewable energy and how much that's going to take for that investment, but seeing that diagram, we can see, or that chart, we can see, well, actually, some of it is just based on action, different action steps we can take, shutting down our computers at the end of the day, things like that, that are really more about people and behavior changes that we need to make versus major investments. So that was really our desire, was just to show that there's really a range of things in this plan, not only just the significant investments.
Any questions? I do have one. This sort of relates to Commissioner Rosman's question. For instance, as we look at, I'm trying to find the reference page, as we look at electrification, implement electrification of renewable energy for county buildings, which is seen as having a major budget implication. I'm assuming that, the question really is, do you need, are you seeking the Board's approval of that as the primary strategy as we move forward in Facilities and Building Operations? Or are we presuming that because it's in the action plan, that will be the direction the staff go, and we can just anticipate any new building designs would be incorporating photovoltaic or other options?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we did not prepare a formal resolution today to say we approved this plan. It was more of an update on actions that we had presented last spring, but knowing that things of that scope would have to come through the Board or through PD Committee first, you know, before they would move forward because of significant, right, budget implications and so forth. So I think what we're seeking is general, again, approval, direction, support to say, yes, move forward with this, but then as appropriate individual action steps will still need to come for Board approval.
So maybe a relevant question for the Board might be, do we see anything that concerns us? Or do we see anything, are we aware of anything that we thought would be in this, at this stage of development that is not reflected in this plan? And for those of you who work more actively than I do on these issues, do you see something that needs attention, either because it's missing, or you feel like it may not be heading us in the right direction? Any general comments? I mean, you're looking for general feeling as the Board's supportive of this direction.
Correct. Correct. So that brings to mind a question for me to think about. Across these thirty-two recommendations, will there be a standardized set of metrics that each department is completing, that we can, will have a standardized for each ask that comes to us, whether it's a budget ask, or, you know, going after a grant, et cetera? This is why we're asking to implement this, this new technology, or this, this building code, et cetera, the impact, and then the report back to us of, you know, all the metrics, you know, the costs, the environmental impact, et cetera. Is that in the works? Is there a broader initiative to standardize some of that information back to us across this?
Yep, Madam Chair, Commissioner Rosman, we have asked each of the departments, again, who own, quote-unquote, the, each of these department actions, plans, to start developing what that baseline looks like. So, you know, in some cases, or maybe it's just developing a policy, it's what the baseline is, there is no policy. Of course, for example, in Mr. Miller's world, it's much more complicated as, well, what is the baseline for the energy use, and then how would, you know, renewable change that profile? So we are asking them to figure out, well, what is the baseline, and how would you track that change depending on the action that you're taking? So I don't have a formal document for you at this time that shows how we're going to track that, but that is part of this now handoff into implementation. So at, you know, at the request of our administrators, if PAC can be helpful with the planning team to continue developing, what does this monitoring and oversight look like? We're happy to do that, and I think it might be helpful to have another conversation with the full Board about what else are you looking for, and what would, what would make your jobs easier then, so we can prepare those documents for you.
Commissioner Sinjam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, after the utility sector, transportation is like the number one or number two contributor to, you know, greenhouse gases. Do we have any kind of a guideline, at least within the county, for, just for helping us consider when we buy an EV versus when we buy a gasoline vehicle? And I suspect we buy one or two every year, I don't know, but I suspect the purchase of vehicles is sort of a continuing kind of phenomena. What's our guidance on whether or not this time we get an EV versus?
So, Madam Chair, I apologize, I think I said Mr. Chair.
You probably don't know, but maybe not a fair question.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Sinjam. I'm going to have to get used to Madam Chair again. Madam Chair, Commissioner Sinjam. So I will just give one brief answer related to this plan, and then perhaps Deputy Administrator Eason would like to add to this. But in general, within this climate action initial plan, what we've said is that they're continuing to analyze this question on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the needs, whether it's fleet, whether it's motor pool, whether it's, you know, something that needs to be driven sporadically versus very predictably. The charging infrastructure is still evolving, as you know, and so what the county can do, and whether that's practical and feasible for what we need to do for our business, depends on the context. So to your question of whether there are guidelines or any further details, I would defer to Mr. Eason if he has anything to add.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sinjam, nothing much more to add, other than Public Works is monitoring this very closely across state and national standards, so all of the fleet and motor pool are, it's being evaluated on an ongoing basis. So there's, I don't believe there's any specific criteria established yet, other than, you know, Deborah's mention of the charging stations, but also our mechanics and what we're able to, to, you know, repair in the vehicles we have, is, oh, that whole transition is still being evaluated. So I think it is a big area that will get a lot of attention, both in our motor pool and our fleet vehicles.
Madam Chair, I just, the, the, I'm assuming there are some vehicles that we have are sort of, I'll just call them around-town kind of things, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but, but that, that could be electric and would not create any great distraction from life, from the standpoint of the user. But maybe, maybe I'm not correct, or I don't know. But I know Duluth, for instance, and I don't know if this would work for the sheriffs, but I know that Duluth Police Department's at least bought a couple of electric cars, and they're going to, they're going to use electrical vehicles, at least try them in that city. So, so times are changing, and, you know, it's a matter of how are we, either changing with those times or keeping up, or can we, at least in the electrical vehicle area? It would seem to me that we could. I mean, there's, I'm believing there's lots of visits and so on and so forth that are done by people in the human services area. I believe they have vehicles, and are largely within the city of Rochester, and probably could nicely be convenient using electrical vehicle. That's my thought, at least, or assumption.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Sinjam, yes, one thing, we've been waiting quite a few months, I think, to get a response on that electric vehicle charging station grant, which is kind of where will the, our own charging stations be, both at the county level and in coordination with the city? So some of it is hoping that that grant comes through, and then from there, we're able to better place and identify how many and what electric vehicles could be used from that point. So that, that's been a little while when hearing a response on that grant, but we hope to hear from that and then know where our charging stations can be. So it's a piece of the puzzle.
Yeah. Thank you. I would just say, most urbanites, I know that have an electric car, are able to do that on a 110, and their mileage is not enough, you know, to cause any hardship.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Sinjam, we can follow up on this in terms of that specific action item.
I think what I take away that you should be having is that there would be interest in the county board and know more about our fleet, and our fleet management and our plans are in terms of its impact on climate, so. Other comments, questions, my foremembers? I'd just invite the public, I saw, we had a member of our Soil and Water Conservation Board here who just recently left, but particularly, if you look at, in the appendix, the summary of the action plans of the timeframe, I think the county board would welcome people's observations and comments on how we're working to be more climate-friendly in our practices, and what we're anticipating doing immediately, and what we see as longer-term action plans. We did have uh the Physical Development Committee this morning did review, uh did a basic, I would call a. A brief overview of carbon capture and what the potential for that is. And I think uh we were, we, I would speak for myself saying we left a bit daunted and didn't see a clear path forward. And I think on a lot of these issues where um technologies are emerging. Um we, we are interested in. In having best practices, but not necessarily being the experiment at the cutting edge. So um uh I think the community's interest in this topic is growing. And um as I said in my opening comments, hearing from the people about what they want to have happen and how they see. Us proceeding as part of our deliberation process in addition to the good work our staff do. So, thank you, uh any, any other comments from members? Well, thank you to the staff who have put this together and we now have it under advisement and um we will be. We will be hearing more in the coming months, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner time, no, okay. Uh so we have completed our informational items and we're moving on now to board and committee reports. And our tradition is we just go down the row and ask who has a report. And um I'm going to start with Commissioner Wright.
I have no report today, thank you very much.
No report?
Commissioner Sanjam.
I'll report Happy New Year.
Commissioner time?
No report.
No report, no report.
Oh my goodness. This, uh this, this has to be um a first. Um we are going to adjourn our full board meeting now and then move to a committee of the whole. But I also would like to institute a, a reinstitute a tradition that this board had maybe five years ago. That uh former Commissioner Ken Brown instituted, which was at the conclusion of every meeting. He read um a quote from a source that was relevant to the work that the county board was doing, particularly around political issues. Um I contacted him and said, can I have that book that you used, cause it was so good, which he no longer has. So I'm left to my own devices and I I do think it's a nice way to close off a meeting. And what I'm using is a, a, a portion of a poem by John O'Donoghue. From the book Bless the Space Between Us. And John O'Donoghue was a poet and a philosopher and I, I really like his work. And I think this is a nice way for us to begin our year together. This poem is called For a Leader. For a leader. May you have the grace and wisdom to act kindly, learning to distinguish between what is personal and what is not. May you be hospitable to criticism. May you pu- never put yourself at the center of things. May those who work for you know you see and respect them. May you know the wisdom of deep listening, the healing of wholesome words, the encouragement of the appreciative gaze. The decorum of held dignity, the springtime edge of the bleak question. May you have good friends to mirror your blind spots. And may leadership be for you a true adventure of growth. May those things come to pass for us as board members and we are now, I will now entertain an uh a motion to adjourn. And we will be having committee of the whole in this room or in room two or in.
Room two.
In room two.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
So moved to second, all of them favors, signify by second.